Help us out as like people then we can go run and tell others about the good news and who to get involved with politically. But most of all, Lord, we want you to bless each and every one of us as individuals and continue leading us and we will give you the glory and the praise. And all these blessings we ask from Jesus, I mean, we pray. Amen, amen, amen. That sound pretty good, lose a picture here.
I know Reverend Bisbee.
Thank Reverend Thrillkill for the prayer. Before we get started, I'd like to first thank Pastor Carl Arthur for opening up the doors of the church house to allow us to have this town hall meeting. I'd like to thank all of the people who came out to participate and take part in the meeting. Johnell Allen Bay, Linda Boo, Cynthia Hayes, Keisha Turo. We want to thank sisters from way down by Detroit, Sterling Heights, Angelique Johnson, coming up, Brother George, Sean Quillen. We got Sister Ms. Nolan in the house and we got Judge Candidate Mary Hood is here. And we got Fly City Blackout in the house. Brother Dewan is here with us to put on his show live at the town hall. My co-host from Black Lives Matter, Brother Darius. And we're gonna start off quickly because the first portion of the town hall, we deal with the social injustices that have taken place that we've been dealing with or trying to tackle and try to bring some form of justice to it. So we give updates on those issues at the beginning of the town hall meetings. It started, for those that don't know, it started with John Fleming, who was assaulted and beat up twice in one day by two different law enforcement officers. And one happened at Hurley and we've been going to the Hurley board meetings every last Wednesday of the month at five o'clock to voice our view and what we think should happen. They haven't been doing too much and making too many moves, but we still gonna go. If we can get more people to come up and show involvement, if you got a family member yourself or a loved one that's been to Hurley, been mistreated, and you got something you want to say, come up the last Wednesday of every month to Hurley. Be there by four forty-five so you can sign to do public speaking. They give you five minutes to speak. And you can lay out your case and your issue. I've been going so much, they don't really respond to me no more, they don't got tired of me. But when the first time was come, they usually send them a letter and say something to them from what they said. But they don't say too much to me no more. John Fleming case is at the civil level now. So we can't go too far into detail on the civil matter, but it's in a civil level and it looks as if he's gonna be given something because they were wrong. We just don't know where that's gonna be given something yet. Alright, here's our facilitator in the house, Pastor Devante Powell. Come over and see that he, he want to sit in the back. You on the fly as the facilitator. And you gotta be facilitated.
Come forth, Moses. Come forth, Moses.
So that's with John Fleming, now the Kiara Howe case, for those who don't know. She was in a car accident, Mother's Day morning. And she got arrived by the ambulance from the car accident to hurt. When she got to Hurley, they took her to the back to do an intake, get her information, and then put her out in the waiting room. While she was in the waiting room, she bowled over complaining of pain in her chest and stomach. They told her she had to wait. Eventually, she slumped down, slid out of the chair to the floor, and she died from internal bleed. She was just twenty-five years old. Now, but not only was that tragic, but the action that happened after she died is what made us in ways. The Caucasian nurse walked over to her. Instead of reaching down to check her vitals, to see if she was alive, she kicked her foot out at her and nudged her with her foot like she was animal. And we wouldn't have knew about it except for one of the, the safety people there felt that that was so inhuman. He snitched on her and said, "Look, it's on the video." But now the video is miraculously put up somewhere in the basement awaiting further, I guess, information from civil matters and whatever else. So we can't see it. But I thought that was totally outrageous and no one has been dealt with in any form or fashion from that behavior. I had the nurse name, but I didn't know it. Because this, this happened on Mother's Day, we been going up there fighting. So, so like Brother Darius say, we started with ten or twelve people and as the fight kept going, it dwindled down to one or two. Because we learning that one of the biggest problems with fight for justice is people emotionally start off strong, but when they learn the fight is long, they give up and only be a couple left. So, so we tell people now, "If you ain't here for the long haul, don't even start with it." Just go home and forget about it because this is a long fight. Justice ain't gonna come overnight by people who don't want to give you justice in the first place. So those are the updates. Now, the newest case that has come to us, we thought the family, I don't know if the family's here, the Davis family. The young man that died on Pearson Road in a police chase. So the issue, the issue here with this is that police chases are illegal when the city is free. So that's the issue. In the whole, was it whole Tennessee county? For the whole Tennessee county, now I stand corrected, the whole Tennessee county, police chases are illegal. So if they chased him, we have to say allegedly from vibes, club on the Pearson Road, and he lost control and crashed. Then we not saying we dismissing anything dealing with him. We saying that you as the more public, responsible public servant, knew that this wasn't allowed, should have stopped pursuit and called for backup and tried to roadblock or do something, call the helicopter y'all got with the state police or something. But to continue to pursue, put him in a situation, you know somebody chasing you, you, you don't be thinking, you, you trying to get away. So, so.
There was another car involved in our accident too, a Caucasian man got.
Also another car.
Yeah, they collided with this.
With that car. So he collided from the chase, so he lost control and collided with another car. That person lived.
Oh, let me tell you, me and him, we live in front of where it happened. We wake up and we, we hear the boom and I hear police immediately and going off. And I'm saying, "How do I hear the boom and the police?" Because they never there when the boom, when the, when the, everybody know. So I, me and him, yeah, me and him hurry up, we get out close on the go outside. They at the car, the police is at the Caucasian car saying, "Breathe, breathe, breathe, breathe." And this brown man, I didn't even know it was nobody in that car, it's how bad it was, they never went to that car. I never knew the man was in there, dear. We standing like from hearing to you from the car and we, that day never acknowledged that man presence in that car.
Oh, that's a problem.
That's a wrong way to follow.
So we got a eyewitness that was there.
Two, because the neighbor. The neighbor.
Neighbor was there. Now, now here's my hope, because the, the thing, because I don't want nobody, because they're going on social media spinning this. We ain't taking no sides and we ain't blaming nobody for political purposes. Because, because right now, anybody do something, everything, you remember when they was after Osama Bin Laden? They blame you for everything. If the oil was, was leaking, it's Osama Bin Laden. If it didn't rain for two years, Osama Bin Laden. So now they do it, now they do it with the man. If anything happens, it's his fault. If it's his fault, it's his fault, but when it ain't, I don't want to make it his fault. Yeah, so for, so you got a woman who lost a child, who don't care about your politics and who you think should, should be. She worried about her loss, how she gonna deal with it, how she gonna get through it, and it's justice gonna come to her for her loss. So those who take somebody's suffering and use it for a political purpose is just as evil as the people that you going after. And we didn't want to put that on the table, we sick of that. We tired of that stuff. So those are the social issues that we wanted to cover. Is there any more, Brother Pastor Powell? Pastor Powell, this Pastor Devante Powell was Nation Mission Network, Rising Nation Mission Network. And he's one of the original facilitators who started this town hall. Back when John Fleming was first assaulted twice in one day. And he continued to keep going, ain't too many, you know, but he a young brother. So they, they probably say he just don't know nobody. Now, he know better, he know the race ain't to the swift, but it's to the one who endure to the end. So we want to thank again everybody who showed, because you showed. I always say the people who here, the people that should be here. The people ain't here, they weren't meant to be here because God is in control of everything. So, so I don't worry about who don't come, I, you know, few people can change the condition of many with unity. So people always tell me, what's, what's more powerful, open hand or a closed fist? Closed fist, if everything come together. Open hand, you apart. So we appreciate everybody who came in. We got Rich coming in, we see Rich Jones. And, and I want to say this before I turn it over to Brother Powell. In the city of Flint, we have a unique issue that other people got, but Flint is more unique because of how small the town is. And that is, we have a problem if we don't like you, we don't want to support you. This is crazy, I don't, I don't get it. But, but let me show you how crazy we is. We say we don't like Trump, but we gonna give all our money to the war, might as well give three million dollars to Trump. So do you really don't like him or you just seen him? So when we don't like each other though, we really show it. We, we, we could see somebody drowning and we say, "For them his people." So they gotta come save you, but you right there with the rope. And won't even throw it out there because you don't like them and his people. And then we talk about unity all the time and we need to quit talking it and just do it. Unity ain't no word no more, unity is a behavior expressed through active works with one another. Most of the people in here, I can vow that they really believe in unity, they don't talk. I worked with Brother Johnell, he come, he called me, was that last week, said we need water at the county jail. And we went to work. Went, we had some pastors donating money, Pastor Powell was one, a couple of them, we went and picked it up, Pastor Moore. And then me and him went, met up at a, what's that, Sam's Club and got a pallet in the hay. Put it on my truck, brought, brought it back, unloaded it, then we went to Bethlehem, they gave us about twenty cases. And it was for the indigenous prisoners because they had ran out of free water for the indigenous prisoners. Said that's working. The brother called me, said, "Man, this is a family need, uh, uh, what was it, refrigerator?" And I said, "I can't find it, but I got some money on it." You, you, whatever, how much money you need, I put towards one, go buy one. That's what, that's unity, not go, "Man, let's work together and let's, let's, let's make it happen." That's all we keep saying, "Let's work together and make it happen." And we ain't doing nothing.
They call them like, they can't call.
We got two thousand organizations fighting for the same thing, it ain't nobody together. That's, that's Flint. The sad truth happened. Flint, Flint is different, but I love old Flint and I love the people here. I, I don't really blame the people to the degree that they intentional. Some of them just don't know no better, some of them got sincere hearts, but it's just being led by the wrong person in the wrong direction. So we, we, we still leave the door open to work, to make something happen. But at the end of the day, I'm gonna turn it over, you can't count on nobody to do nothing for you but you and God. Everybody else is a bonus. We call that a plus. If you go into office and do something for us and it help us, that's a plus. That ain't, "You changed my life," should be trying to change and make it better for myself. And everything you do should be a bonus to that. Because that's what make people sit and suffer is so long because we waiting on somebody to make a change for it when real change gonna come through you, you and I. That's how we gonna get it. If we don't do that, I don't care who you put in office, they can't make you, your life what you want it to be if you ain't trying to make it be what it should be. So I'mma turn it over to Pastor Powell real quick and then from there, Brother Darius, and we just started on the, on the political portion. We have our sister from Sterling Heights is gonna, Angelique Johnson, she gonna introduce herself when she come up. She's gonna go through proposal three. Because I, I, I asked for help on proposal three because I had issue with proposal three. Because they put a situation, I don't like being bullied, you know, I didn't like bullies in school, I used to fight the bullies. Because I didn't like them. So you gonna make a bill, a proposal, where you put so many good and then follow it up with a bunch of bad stuff. And then you tell us it's all or nothing. Either you take the good and all this bad and say yes, or you say no and lose it all. And, and that, I don't like that, that's like, you know, that's a gangster move, trying to punk people. So thank you again, here's Pastor Powell, let's welcome him with a round of applause.
Good evening, everyone. It's good to be here, thank you all for showing up and attending the community meeting. Pastor Thrillkill, good to see you today, tonight. One of our old cheese in the community and man, he's been pastor here for years and man, he is a historian and he leads the way in the community. So I'm thankful that he's here tonight, thankful that each of us are here tonight. And it shows that we care and not only that we care, but that we're trying to collectively do something together to address what is going on in our community. So I'm not gonna talk long tonight because I want to hear about proposal three and that's why, the main reason why we're here tonight. But one of the things that we want to share with us, I'm, I'm going to share a short statement and then post that. We'll do a, a short little activity and then from there we'll go and bring up the next speaker. So one of the things I want to share with us tonight is, there's a common theme, we'll talks about the tortoise and the, and the hare, right? You know, the rabbit and the turtle and, and, and that race, right? And so they ran the race together and I know we all, I'm preaching to the choir, we all know that story, right? So the tortoise was just inching and doing its small little piece by piece, doing what it needed to do. And the tortoise, and the rabbit is just zoom, 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 everywhere, you know, zoom, zoom. And I mean, he's full of himself, he has all this energy, right? And, and somehow when you get to the finish line, the hare is so tired out from exerting itself and, and showing and doing things that was not the main focus point of the race, right? And he lost the race. He had the gifts, he had the ability, and he had the advantage, but he lost the race because he was not focused. And so Flint, we have gifts, we have abilities, we have talent, but we as a community will lose this race if we are not focused. I'm not talking about a political race, I'm talking about a race of people, community coming together to see this community come back. And so one of the things that I want to do this evening, I see we're in perfect sections, I'mma split this one in half when I do it. But I'm gonna give us about ten minutes, but I want to address, share what I want us to do for a brief second as we get in these small groups. But just briefly for about, I'm gonna say five to seven minutes. Y'all know we, we work on CP time, so five to seven to turn it to ten minutes, y'all know how that works. Five to seven minutes. But what I want us to do is, we've heard the social issues in our community tonight, right? We've, we've heard, many of you who have come to these meetings from the beginning, we've talked about the problem, right? We, we've addressed it, we've shared about it. We know there is a problem, not just in the city, not just in this county, not just in the state. There is a systematic institutionalized problem in this country, right? And so what we need to do as individuals in the city of Flint, first of all, let us not be helpless. If anybody is gonna help us, it starts with us. God has empowered each of us to make a change right where we are on your block, in your community, in your church. So let us not remain helpless. You have a mouth, you have energy, you have a gift, you have something to contribute to the community, right? So all of these things, we see this past weekend, I was traveling from Atlanta to, back, back here. I'm, I'm now between Georgia and Michigan a lot. And so I was traveling from Atlanta back home, stopped in Kentucky and, and it was late at night. And so while I pulled over at the gas station, was filling up, I noticed a police car was behind. A, a car was at the pump, two older black women in the car and a policeman was, police car was right behind them. You know, I was like, alright, let me pause, let me see what's going on, what's going on, let's, I don't know them. And so I paused and the, the police was right there and I said, "Ma'am, you know, you alright, what's going on?" She explained to me something was going on with the registration of her car, I don't know, all that good stuff. But basically the police did not want, if she moved the car, he was gonna impound the car and put, place her in, in jail. And so she explained to me and I don't have time to go into her whole story of how she couldn't and all this good stuff. But one of the things I, I'm bringing from that story is, we as individuals in this community of Flint, we have to choose every day to do something, what we can do in our power. When you see the police pulling over somebody, stop and wait, that's your right. They can't tell you to leave, they can't tell you to put down your phone, stop and wait, right? If we see young people down the street doing something that they shouldn't, you know, stay out of that dope, come on, y'all. We, we know what's going on in the streets of Flint, okay? If you gonna smoke dope, and I hate I'm in the pool pit saying this, I, I, you know, I hate saying this, but we at the community meet, let's be real, right? If you gonna smoke dope, young brother, young sister, go to the dispensary and buy. Don't keep buying from, from the house where it's, where it's laced with fentanyl and things like that and our young people are dropping dead. We have to be the community, be transparent and have real conversations. Because as long as we avoid these real conversations, our community will continue to die. Right? Okay, so what I want us to do, I see this section right here, you four over there, my brother in the green shirt, you can join that section. I'mma split this section in half, my sister in the Michigan hat. If you would go with Pastor Thrillkill and the beautiful woman sitting next to him. And then this section right here, everybody in that section, let's, five to seven minutes. We've heard the social issues, we've heard what's going on, five to seven minutes, not what they should be doing. That's not the conversation. Not what they should be doing, what can I do in my own power? If you are not talking about what you can do, we're off, we're off the conversation. So for the next five to seven minutes, what can I do? What do I have the power to do in my church, in my community, in my community block club? What can I do to make a difference for the issues that we have heard tonight? Alright, let's go, five to seven minutes.
I gotta listen to my elder one more than, okay? Y'all say about her.
Seven, six, five, four, three, two, one. Let the church say, yeah. Let the church say, yeah. See? I'm telling you, no matter who you are, Islam, Baptist, Catholic, if you black, it's just certain stuff you know if you black, right? I knew that would get us together. Alrighty, let's start with my group over here. Who's your person appointed to share out?
First of all, so, in our group over here, we had really a conversation. We had to take an extra minute, the mother over here asked, which was totally worth it. Thank you, and thank you, we appreciate you giving us that. Um, well, going to what we discussed, first of all, is it Mr. John?
John L.
Mr. John L. His ideas, as we talked, was to implement, um, he implemented two policies, is what he did. When he asked, what could we do in our communities? That was the question, um, posed to each group here today. What is it that we can do ourselves to make a difference in our communities? And so, he has already put that to, um, good use by creating two policies, um, where he is in the tent, is he working, right? We work at, okay, I got that right. He said, those who are, um, who are close to the problem has the solution. Which is awesome to say that, because this young lady was just talking about something she was close to, and she may have some solutions to that, and that's why she's here tonight, I'm pretty sure. So, that's a really good thing, um, in my book. Um, you said, hold people responsible, those who are in leadership. So what you're doing as a grassroots movement person to make change is hold leadership responsible. So those are two of the things that, um, two policies he put forth, and some of the things he had to talk about, which I could tell he had a lot more to say, um, to go on with that. But, um, also, he said, um, we need to see how, uh, about how man could be a man. We need to see that, we need to see what's a real man these days. And put that forth too, in the communities that we are in, in the communities that we're trying to help, especially for our youth. They need to see that example, that's always a good thing. He also said, we need to get more involved, and they need to see what a real man looks like. That's what I meant to say in that. Um, and our other, um, person who was talking in our group, I'm sorry, I don't know the names, I just met everybody in.
Doctor Brilke.
Doctor?
Reverend Prelon Brilke.
Okay. He said that, um, as black people in Flint, we need to see things through. And that's a really good idea to, um, implement. When you are on the ground working grassroots, you need to go and not just start something, but continue to be about what you started. So that was, um, impressive. He said, we, um, become what we fight against. That was real deep, that was deep. We become what we fight against. That was deep, I'm just leaving that right there. He, um, put down three pillars, he said, get involved, be informed, and follow through. So, our group had that come out of it. And we also talked about, um, the, um, Mrs. in the back, she said... Ms. Nolan, thank you. She said, be aware of the dark side of things. You know, we can clearly see what's the dark side, you know, when you go outside and open your door, go into your communities, and go down the streets and, and to our neighborhoods, and even to our family lives, we can see clearly what it is, but who's talking about it, you know? And being about doing something about it. So that was, um, definitely a good thing to say, um, in that regard. She said, also, um, don't be easily bought. And I added to that, change takes more. You see what I'm gonna do, don't be easily bought, but change takes more. So, yeah, I'm gonna leave that one right there too, just ponder it, like, like, uh, say like, I'm gonna pause and think about that. So, we also talked about, give out hope. And then, I added to that, what this young lady added in our group, I'm sorry, I don't remember her name.
Lysia.
Lysia? Thank you. She said, give out hope. And what came to me when you said that was, yes, let's give our hope like candy to our youth, you know? That they would get involved and be included. They'll be more apt to do that if we not only gave out what we give them around this time of the year, with that candy, give out hope. You know? Not just hope it changed, but we gonna give it out, and gonna be about giving it out and following through with it. That's a pillar, and we can move and do something with that as a grassroots community. Um, we also talked about, don't give up on people. Be consistent, and I added this, be consistent and radical about doing what's right. So, in the grassroots movement, as a person who's coming to say, I'm here at this meeting, what can I do to help? I'm gonna be consistent and radical about doing what's good. Because we already see the other side of radical out here. You know? And the last thing we talked about is hold who's in leadership responsible. No matter what.
Claire.
Ms. Claire said right here, is that right? She really struck my heart when she said that, you know? Because she said, it doesn't matter what side you come from, it doesn't matter what party you serving or you gonna vote for. She said, we need to hold whoever is in that position of leadership responsible, whoever that may be. And then, I added to that, when you hold people responsible, how do you do that? By each one reaching one. You know? Each one of us gotta reach the ones in leadership that are responsible in order to hold them responsible. Like she said, what's going on here is not fair, fix the water first. No one has stepped up and, and done radical change for this community in that regard. So before you talk about who you gonna vote for, whose side you on, she said, I don't care whose side you on. You being independent, you purple, whatever. Fix the water first, and don't just talk about it, be about it. And I swung that up with saying, what I would have to add to that, you know, is, what I would do to implement and come into a situation to help wherever I can, I'mma always put God first. And I learned this the other day, to put my country next, and then family. And I thought that, that's not usually the way that go. It usually go, God, family, then your country, right? You heard that? But he said, important person that I, um, saw the other day, I'm gonna give him credit, that was David Burton. He said, God, country, family, because without a country, you won't have a family. Where, where your family don't go, what can you do if, you know, you, you deplete it from your country? Or doing what it takes to stand up and unite to help save the country, no matter what side you're on. And that right there, I believe, is where I'll end with each one reach one and unity.
Alrighty, appreciate that, group number one. Okay, so I just wanna, uh, briefly go through, involve, be informed, follow through, be aware of the dark side of things. Um, a lot of what I heard you all, uh, dis- discuss, uh, I, I can sum it up to integrity, everyday integrity, alright? Everyday being integral, okay? Uh, this group right here, alright, can we share, okay? And I wanna say this, uh, let's kinda keep it contained a little bit in time, so we can, I wanna give my sister time. You good, you good.
Y'all know who this is, y'all know who this is.
Alright, everybody, we, we went issue by issue when, when Brother Jamil was talking. And we, uh, started out with the young man that got into the car accident, Brother Davis. We thought about getting a support group for the mothers of the children that have been killed. And actually, I had issues because the police are the law, so they should know the law. So, why was this gentleman in pursuit when he knew that it was illegal? That was one thing. The other thing was the young man, Brother Fleming, that was, uh, and I follow Brother Jamil on Facebook. Every time he goes to, uh, Hurley, I'm watching, listening to him. He makes perfect sense. The problem I have is, what's wrong with the N W A C D? We don't hear from them, we don't hear from them, we hear about Freedom Fund Dinner, but we, there are many issues in this city. There are many sick issues in this city that need addressing. Brother Jamil named about four or five. And I'm not going to attend any of those dinners. I'm not saying all the people are wrong or bad in that organization, but they need to step it up. That goes back to this young lady talking about your leadership. And we need to step it up, and stop being so touchy-touchy, and let it get down to the brass tacks and do the job. That's, that's, well, one of the things, was one, but what was the third one? It was another issue. Oh, the hospital deal. The brother that got, oh, the young lady, the young lady, she was my neighbor. Heard it was her daughter, she was in a car accident. She got inside Hurley, and she, uh, was hurt, and she must have been hurt internally. And so, she went under the chair, and that's where she died. They put us, and, and so, she needs a support group and a good attorney. And everybody does not know how to lead. Everybody doesn't know how to speak up, everybody doesn't know who to reach to for resources. And the ones of us that do need to step it up. And I did speak with her, you know? These are some things, and, uh, Claire talked about their leadership. We keep putting the same folks back in office continuously. They'll tell us something that we may wanna hear, or aid a little bit here and there, and they keep doing the same, they getting filthy rich, a lot of them. And we still sitting back here in the pothole, you know what I'm saying? So, there are a lot of issues, some people I don't like, because I don't like their movement and how they speak, and how they mislead. But if the cause is right, I'm there. So that's the bottom line to it all. And I am an activist, and we are the water warriors, so some of us have stepped up. Like Ms. Claire, she's the head of the Democracy Defense League, and we are on the board with her. So, we are the ones that took the buses out of here constantly. We didn't just talk about it, we been about it. We went downtown today. We went downtown today because the community, and I put this on Facebook today, there's, because we're getting our water from Detroit. Every Flintstone is eligible for the RAP program. The RAP program comes out of Detroit, they sent a representative, who I talked to today, in the water office. She's there every Thursday from nine until three thirty. So these are the things we gotta share with the community, because everybody needs help. This water crippled us in so many ways. But there are a lot of people that became billionaires off of our dad. Do you hear me now? So, my thing is, let's get it together and stop talking so much, and come together in unity for real. Cause some of us in here are old enough to remember how things were back in the day in Flint. And we were vital to the situation. And I wanna get back there, which is one reason I'm running for the Flint School Board. Cause if we put the right people on that board, I believe we can turn it back around and get some public schools back on, especially on this north end of Flint. That's the systemic racism, bottom line. So I know it's tiptoe around the issue, then it is what it is. Let's go over it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Perkins, for sharing on behalf of this group right here. Alrighty, so I heard, um, a few things. Support group for grieving mothers, alrighty? Support group for grieving mothers, uh, the RAP program that comes out of Detroit, uh, the rap for, the rap person is there every Thursday from nine AM to three thirty. Alright, so I'm gonna share this stuff on Facebook as well, but, but these are things that we can do, okay? So let's make sure we're listening and taking notes. So, this is what I wanna do, uh, I think Brother Jamil, you two kinda said something. Y'all, y'all were talking about male image and, and over here, and then, and you were talking about support groups, okay? So, so this is my challenge. Out of you all in this group, out of you all in this group, it don't take long. You can meet at a public restaurant, who's going to start the group? Alright, and if it's already started, give us the information so we can post it. That way, the people who need to be coming to that group can know about it and be exposed to it. So if they're, if we need male mentorship, who's gonna start taking the young brothers out? Let them know, hey, let's meet up at this restaurant on this road every Saturday or, or first and third, whatever. Who's going to start that stuff and be consistent with this, so?
I had one more thing.
Yes, ma'am, uh-huh?
This, this is really a big mind, but I gotta say it.
Go ahead.
Okay. I wish, now, we all remember the Me Man March, right? And everybody had so much pride during that time, and I was so proud of the brothers coming together. I really was, I was very proud. I am the vice president of the Me One March Movement, and I took three buses to Philadelphia on the original march for the sisters. I wish the men, first of all, we need these young boys trained, young men trained, young boys and men. We need, we need to train them, but we gotta have leadership in the ranks with people that are in position to train them. You know how you came up? That, that's major for me, you know what I'm saying? I don't wanna see a man with his underwear showing. What if I walked around and pulled my dress up and showed my business? You think I was crazy, take it to the, to one of her and her? Come on! That's major for me. I wish the men would start a campaign, and I've said this to several of them before, on Pull Your Pants Up. We are queens, and we are due respect, do you hear me now? We are queens, we were born royal, and we need for you to start stepping it up. The reason we have so much pride and blight, because our kids are busting windows out in their own community. We gotta let them understand, you live here, do you wanna live in a dump all your life? Aspire to be better. We have great leaders that we stood on their shoulders, like Asa Phillip Randolph, Magra Edwards, Martin Luther King. We got so many mentors, but men, you are the leaders, you were ordained to lead, then lead and stop talking about it and be about it. And that's where I'm at, good man.
I appreciate that, I've been so long...
I'm gonna start your Pull Your Pants Up campaign, I'm getting my word, I'm getting a shirt back this weekend. I'm gonna get that word, I'm gonna have it too.
Alright, so once again, um, the, 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 the ideas that came forth from these groups, the whole point of this exercise is to now put action behind, alright? So now, at the next meeting, I wrote down what these groups said, because at the next meeting, y'all make sure y'all show up, because I wanna know accountability. What have you done since the last meeting, based upon what you said? What have you yourself done in your own power, in your own community, your family, your household? What have you done to make a difference? Accountability now, alright? Cause we can preach, I'm a preacher, so, so y'all know, I, I do this every Sunday, I can preach about it, I can. But now, who's going to walk on it and act on it, okay? This is what this, uh-huh, that's what this exercise is about, us moving on action, alright? So I want us to take the action items, the action things that we heard from these groups, we get to this group last weekend. But one of the things I wanted to say, the last group, uh, the first group, someone said, uh, building hope or getting out hope or something like that, and it, it aligned with, uh, what Sister Perkins said, because, uh, um, these kids didn't learn depression, they didn't learn drugs, they didn't learn firearms, they did not learn that by themselves. That was taught, okay? So if that was taught, who's teaching hope? This is not something you stand up and yell at kids and say, you gotta have hope, you gotta have hope. What did y'all do? Pull up y'all pants, blah, 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 blah? They're not listening. I'm not listening. I'm just being honest. I, I'm not. I'm twenty-seven. That's, that's not how you reach them. It's, it's, it's not. It's not, right? So, what are, how are we going to meet them right where they are? And get them, right? We have to teach them hope. We cannot assume that they have hope. We have to teach that to them. If they grew up and the hope was, everybody talks about it, and I want to, for the older generation, I think this is good, because we have to learn how to have intergenerational conversations in Flint. If we do not, the bridge will stay broken and all the great young people that's in Flint now will continue to go to other cities. And Flint will continue to fall. I'm just being honest, right? There is great talent in Flint, but it's leaving because no one wants to put up with the, uh, hypocrisy here. It, it, it's easier to go elsewhere. I'll go down Atlanta. I'll go down south and do it there than to stay here, okay? So, so, but let, let's have this conversation. I, I love to hear the older generation talk about what Flint was back in the day. Back in the day. But when you talk to a twelve-year-old that's only known Flint for twelve years, they don't know anything about Flint back in the day. So, teach hope. We have to teach that. The stories are good. Let's share the stories, but let's also teach that as well. We don't know about what it was back in the day. We didn't exist. We didn't live. This is the Flint that we are conditioned to now, okay? So, how do we show them that Flint can become better? We can't expect them to know about the past. They didn't exist, okay? Sister Perkins, I'm, I'm gonna give you thirty seconds, but I gotta move to this group. Thirty seconds. Go ahead.
I can read it right here. Support groups for the children to teach them our history, because they won't let them teach our history in the schools. They have taken it out. My daughter is a teacher. She said they are not allowed to teach black history in the schools.
And I'm gonna tell you something, Sister Perkins. One of the things that we need to do, and I'm gonna advocate for in the Great Lakes District, cause I am a pastor, I'm a pastor in the Great Lakes District, and February, what we do, what we need to do in the Great Lakes District, we got a historian, a living historian. We're past the Freeland Thrill Care. We need to have a Sunday evening where just get Pastor Thrill Care a seat and let them talk and have all the children there. And let them learn. That's important. I remember I was forced to sit at my grandmother's feet when she talked, or my grandfather's feet. I didn't understand everything and I really didn't like it all the time. Oh, but how I wish I could go back now, but there in the grace. And, and sit, alright, I'm up.
I gotta go get my kids from the after-school program, but I do want to say this one thing. Uh, and when I speak about hope prior, you, because if we don't give them something to look forward to, there's no, there's no more for you, you know, period. I'm getting ready to put a project together, and I haven't spoke to many people about this. I've been kind of sabbatic for a while in the community.
What's your name?
Lysia Williams. And I had to sit back and get me together, especially after the pandemic and things like that. But what I want to do is put a project together, you know how they do science fair for kids and they get to come together and put their ideas? So, I want to do something where we challenge our kids to make a blueprint of what their ideal high school look like. What are those programs in that high school that they would think it will help them elevate to the next level? Cause we always telling kids what they need and what they want. Let them tell us. This is what we want our school to look like. Tell the school board, hey, and then we have a fair where they build this school. They come together as a group. We give them a project. They come together as a group and the ones that make the best project. Give them a reward like two thousand dollars and take them to go do something, have a grand prize like any other science fair. They don't do science fairs like that.
That's a smart idea. Let's collaborate. There are organizations, can you give your name, your number to Darius? He's gonna get it from you, but right, I know you're going out, but he's gonna meet you at that door. Give it to him and I want to reach out to you. Let's collaborate. Alright, group number three. They've been waiting patiently, alright? I want to hear from group number three.
So, our group was very passionate about what we thought, and we had a lot of different opinions on those things. Uh, to be respectful about it, I'm gonna speak on all those issues. We didn't really come up with the organization that you all did with all of these things, because there was so much passion on how destructive our community has become. So, being able to get past that traumatic thinking, to get to some solutions was a little difficult for us. So, one of the things was tear everything down. All of the traditional stuff that we have come to know, tear it down. You know? And, cause it's not working, and the viewpoint of a lot of us is not working. I've needed some of these organizations that have been around since W E B Du Bois and such, wasn't there to help. Uh, and so on and such. I don't want to degrade any of them, because they are still necessary and needed if properly used, if properly managed, if properly led. If being the primary. So, other things were to try to rejuvenate some of those organizations and some of those things, to, to get them in a better direction. And then others were saying we need to stop re-electing the same people to do the jobs that they're not doing. So, these were some of the, the thoughts that we had, trying to get past all of this traumatic thinking to even have an answer to a solution. To add to it, there's a belief to just use the will that we have and change the trend. So, with all these organizations that we have out here, we, you know, and then if we recall that Flint, per capita, at one period of time, had the most churches in the country.
Yes.
And the history. So, so that, that creates a whole ism of different thought process. Everybody has their own way of thinking, their own, like, I don't need to go down the street by church right here and everybody in my family and I don't know what y'all think, but this is what our Jesus look like. So, the unity kind of changed, but the other part of it too is that we are the aftermath of anarchy. The crack epidemic was anarchy. And we didn't put it here ourselves. We didn't create it, like we not creating this fentanyl. We didn't drive it here. We might have took it across the interstate. But when it comes to the mass production of these things, where it originates, we were the wealthiest black community in the country at one point in time. We were the strongest union in the country at one point in time. You can watch Ted Koppel and, and what was the other guy? Peter Jennings. And they said, they didn't lose the local five ninety-nine, shutting the world down. So, those things have changed. That's no more. I'm at that age where I can remember those things and also see that I've lost several relatives to gun violence and to these streets. And just one story of what to do, of what I did, is I had, I have a cousin, he's still here with us, but he was out here. Wow. Didn't care who, what, or whatever. He told me what he'd do to me. And so I had just moved back two thousand fourteen, January-ish, and, you know, I, I'm thinking I'm still who I am, which I was, but he didn't know me like my other cousins knew me, so we had to introduce, reintroduce ourselves to each other. And he told me how, how the world was moving around him. Look skinny enough and had things on him that didn't make no sense. So, after scolding him about ignorance and all this other stuff, you need to do better. What I personally did, because I'm saying, what are you gonna do? How do you reach somebody and touch them and say, just instead of just scolding them, what are you gonna do? So, all I knew to do, cause this is all I had resources for, I said, what do you want to do? So, he had an idea of doing yard service, cleaning stuff. So, I took all the little tiny money I had, I maxed out the credit card and got him everything that he said he needed. Because guess what? That money is gonna come back some kind of way. If it don't, his life is more boring. So, what are you gonna sacrifice on it? I'm not doing that for praise, but I'm saying, what are you gonna do now? If it's a dollar, five dollars, what are you gonna do? Are you gonna feed somebody instead of just talking them to death and telling them how wrong they are? What are we going to do? I'm part of an organization that when we saw certain things, what did we do? We started using the, the resources that, uh, the unemployment office has with these people that have opportunities to volunteer their time. We started sweeping up, cleaning up, and doing whatever we could, and they were getting paid the hours that they needed for working. So, what are we gonna do? We gonna use the wheels that we have and put a new tread on it. As, and yes, some of this stuff needs to be burnt down, turned in dust, and never come back, but you still have the path to show us before. You use what you got, even if they change the laws after you use what you got. But you gotta use it to see what direction you're gonna go in. And is, did I miss anything? Anything to add? I get a little passionate myself.
Opportunities for the kids, if they would have never took away teen clubs and stuff like that, free athletics. If you're bored as a child, what you gonna do? You gonna bust windows? You gonna do all this different stuff? If, 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 if you're bored and you don't have, do what you gonna do? You gonna entertain yourself. Children, look for entertainment. So, if you don't give them games, you can set up something where they can play games, whatever. Do something with their time, but if they got free time, what, idle? So, so what are you doing? You got so many young children that, that are latchkey, so they at home, nothing to do. Their, their friends say, well, 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 let's go do something. They walking through a neighborhood, they see an abandoned house, what they do? Tear it up. But if they, if they had an opportunity to go inside of a gym and play, some of the adults could be in there with them to supervise, and they can get their exercise on too. So, now you got the young meeting up with the old, and so now they can conversate and, you know, converse and talk and grow together. But it ain't happening no more. When we were in the teen club, it was little kids, older people in there, and we knew who they was, cause they was regularly in there. I don't know none of the young kids now, cause I, I, I know my children. I know my cousins, but I don't know the other children. If they was, if you were teen club, even though I can't play like that, I still would go up there. I would be around it, but, oh, it costs money. You know, every one of these churches usually have gyms, a lot of, nope, they don't come together. If, if, if they do do something, they do it for their members only. They don't, they don't allow nobody else for them to come in. Yeah. I'm like, you got all of these buildings around here, y'all should be coming together. If y'all don't have unity together, y'all pastors, how you gonna respect the people? Y'all are not supposed to be the lead. Spiritually, it's more than these politicians. I don't trust none of the politicians. I really don't trust the church that much myself, but, you know, but that's a whole nother story.
I'm a pastor. I don't trust the church. Um, I thank you for sharing that. I thank you, I thank you, my brother, for sharing. So, I want to sum it up real quick. Um, address the trauma. Address the trauma. Um, the crack epidemic trauma. Um, I think that needs to be addressed. I think it needs to be talked about. I think it needs to be shared. Because some people don't know how we got messed up. And if you don't know how, how it happened, you know, go ahead, my brother.
Real quick, forty-five seconds, coming down. So, I, I, when I moved back, I ran into my, um, uh, teacher.
Y'all don't like, y'all don't like the church, but y'all act like the church.
I ran into my teacher from middle school and I was trying to go to Baker College and, uh, and do better with paper. But I told her a story on how when I was in seventh grade, that one of my best friends at the time was selling crack to the English teacher that was, that, that homes middle school. So, when, when I talk about the trauma, when I talk about it destroyed our community, you know, I, I ain't never sold it, but I was around it. I saw it. I knew how to whip it up, all that stuff, because these were my friends. This was my community. I, and, and, and this is what we were taught. So, it was a byproduct of those that wanted to train us how to do this, to destruct ourselves, to destroy ourselves, but it is a true trauma, because I know some folk that's in the pool pit, they used to be out on the streets on that crack. I know some, and it's nothing against them. I know some folk that used to sell this stuff to their moms. It's a true trauma, and when it comes to Flint, we were concentrated on because we had the money. We, just waters, beauty by itself was, was producing billions of dollars just off the streets by itself.
I appreciate that.
The water, the water is the new crack epidemic. Everybody knows that. What they doing us with this water? It's a new crack epidemic. You ain't got no choice but to smoke this crack.
The Urban Boy Scouts have been helping youth in the city, but nobody's really supporting it in the city.
Urban Boy Scouts?
Urban Boy Scouts.
You know who they, who?
Corey Morris over there.
Corey, okay. Can, I'm gonna, I'm gonna come around. After we bring her up to speech, we'll bring her up in a few minutes, but I'm gonna come around. I'm gonna get that information, cause I've never heard of Urban Boy Scouts, but I do want to.
They're a living cop. They meet every Wednesday on Living Cop, right there in the barber shop. They near me, cause I was a boy scout. Two, two twenty-two.
I had to be mellow real quick, and then I want to finish something like group three.
How, um, listen, I want everybody to hear this. They have, uh, uh, they have, we have now a juvenile home. Ain't no, I ain't heard nobody say nothing about that juvenile home that can benefit all the schools we got in Flint. Did y'all go by there?
I haven't been there, but I heard about it.
They hooked that.
I don't say, what are we saying? What are we saying to our kids? Our schools is torn up. Have you been to the schools, the, the schools, young lady? It look good. The outside look good.
Looks good inside.
What are we doing, people? What, what are we doing? What are we doing for this? What are we doing? Do you know that they have prepared our children to go there?
Yes. We know that. That's why some of us are running this one, this one, and me, we're running for the Flint School Board. But we got so many things against us. Our community needs to vet, focus on the ones that are out here fighting, this vet out here, fighting for us. And if we get the right people on that board, we can help turn some stuff around. We believe in public schools, all three of us. Public schools. That's what we need. Public schools, not charter schools, not catering to these for-profit organizations that don't mean nothing good. The gentrification is getting ready to knock us upside the head. You better wake up. That's what I'm saying. That's, that's, that's being proportioned behind this dark money. So, wake up, community. You got people out here that are willing to fight and stand up for you. We are here, boots on the ground, and we didn't just get here. We been here.
Every day.
Every day.
For every day.
I like that, and I'm going to, I'm at the church. We all, what we going to do is, we want you to go get your address and phone numbers, whatever, so we can get you to our church. Our, the community don't know.
That's right.
I'm sorry.
We're trying to, you know.
We really don't know.
We've been on podcasts. We've been out in the community. We're your water warriors. You're our. Yeah, yeah, we, we been doing, but you got some people that are out here, you know how they send one to get one? That are discrediting the ones that are you. The change you want to see, we here.
You know what's some of the great problem with y'all and what y'all situation about? Some of your best students are leaving the area, because my children, I took them out, because they were penalized for being the best.
That's right. I understand.
And so we had to get them out to get them safe.
That's what I'm saying.
I, I, I thank you for sharing that, um, and I appreciate you saying that, because, uh, one of the things I was gonna add is, in essence, we're, we're kind of tied up to where you were going to, um, we need to address the curriculum.
Thank you.
Being taught in the school. What are choo, what are our children being taught? We need to.
That's what I said. That's what I said earlier.
Okay, sound, okay, cool. Alright, so, um, the, uh, address the trauma, tear down and rebuild education about our elected officials. You all like what you all said about educating, education about our elected officials. We need to know about who these people are, who we are electing, and they free athletic clubs, um, for, for the children. So, I heard the Urban Boy Scouts, um, from my two brothers in here. I also want to bring up, uh, Pastor Moses Bingham of Damascus. Forgive me, Moses, if you're watching. Damascus Holy Life Missionary Baptist Church. He does a youth night, I believe, on first and third Fridays. It's free, totally open to the community. Kevin Thompson at.
Bethany Temple.
Saint Mark. You're about to get me in trouble, sis. Uh, Kevin Thompson at Saint Mark. He does a program as well, um, and I know it's on his page, um, I, I'm trying to think of, and, and forgive me if you're watching or if you're sitting in the pews in your church, does something I don't know about, um, yes, sir.
The people who are impacted the most, they don't go to no Saint Marks, man. They don't go to no churches like that. Those are the people who need our help. They, they ain't got no, listen, the brother says something powerful, right? He's got church hurt, that's something that he's suffered from, right? Well, there's a generation that's coming through who don't believe the same concept, because of.
Well, there's a generation that's coming through who don't believe the same concept, because of the fact that when they shut their eyes, right? They ain't trying to see nothing that don't look like them praying to this, so we can't even, so a lot of times, you know, there's great intentions, but you're not reaching the masses. The masses of the people need help, who are gonna be making decisions tomorrow, they're grassroots, they don't go no churches. They're, they're down here on, on McClellan, they're down here on Wesley, they're down here on Chippewa. They, that's where they are there, and if we don't go and touch them, then we just need to, we just blow air. We, we so top-heavy, right? We're, we're top-heavy, where we're not concerned about who needs us the most. Because that's, that, that's who needs us. Education is the key, I stand on it, because of the fact that it's here. There's some people, there's six hundred and twenty people that reside in the jail, in Genesee County Jail, right? And if those people don't know that they have a voice, and their voices count during these elections, but they don't know what's going on. The average person, this lady just, what's your name, ma'am?
Oh, you're talking about?
Yes, ma'am.
Pastor, Pastor Mark, I'm the pastor.
Okay, so listen to this here. That building just didn't come up last night. Four years ago, four years ago, there was a plan of action. Those weren't set up for, there was a plan of action, four and a half years ago, to be able to do this, you see? So this is not nothing that's just happening here. These things are taking place right now, there's a seed that's being planted, and now we get all over where I'm talking about, bless that, no. Four years ago, you supposed to been on your job, saying that I wanna make sure that they don't build no sixteen million dollars. But guess what? Not enough people are concerned enough and pull up their sleeves and say, let me make sure that that don't happen. Because if, there's a plan of action, that you can be inclusive in it, or you can fight against it, because guess where they built it? They didn't build a good bridge, they didn't put it in fit, they didn't put it in flushing, or applying. Where did they put it?
Where they, where they put the lead in my children, trying to run and say, and our children will never be healed from that lead, and then we have no problems, so now they gonna play on the no problem.
And our leader said the water is clean, and our leader said the water is good, and our leader told us the water is clean.
All right, I wanna bring, I wanna bring this back to order, all right? Because remember, uh, the whole point of this exercise, all right? It's for us to talk about what we can do in our own power. Hold on real quick, hold on real quick, all right? Because we're out of time, right? And, 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 but what we can do in our own power to change what we can do, okay? So let's finish summarizing this group set, free athletic clubs for the children, um, things like that. One of the things I was bringing up, and I, I did hear what you said, uh, 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 brother, John L. about the churches, um, about the churches and things, the people not going to the churches, let me share this with you. These programs that are going on at churches are not church services. They are not church services, they are programs, right? And so one of the things that I want to address with us, we as black people cannot continue to assassinate black religious organizations and say they aren't doing anything when we dash what they're doing. St. Mark's doing a beautiful job, Damascus Holy Life is doing a beautiful job, I don't even know what the urban life, uh, boys, uh, you know, but, but they're doing a beautiful job, right? So whatever these programs that we have, right? If they're gonna reach who they need to reach, but if we're not reaching those people that you're talking about, that's what this conversation is about. Let's develop a program to reach those people who you are saying who aren't getting reached, all righty? Right, so let's not pass the blame, I want us to do what we can do in our own power to change the situation, okay? So I appreciate you all, this went a little longer than what I intended, but I appreciate you all, um, sharing in your groups, coming up with solutions, coming up with things. So remember, when we come to the next community meeting next month, I don't wanna hear about what the mayor's supposed to do, what Karen Weaver's supposed to do, what the rep, I wanna hear about what you did to make your community better. Amen? Amen? Amen, all right, I'm gonna turn over, uh, the mic to our guest, she's here to talk about proposal three this evening, she has sat, and, uh, she has participated. So I'm gonna ask us, just for the next ten minutes, if we could engage, and then I think she is the last individual we have, and I'm gonna bring it up, I, my part is done, but, uh, go ahead, go ahead.
We, uh, let's, uh, recognize and give a round of applause for Ms. Angelique Johnson, she's coming all the way down from Sterling Heights area. And I'll let her introduce herself and give you a quick background before she goes into proposal three, thank you.
Hello, again, everybody, I wanna say thank you for inviting me down here today. Thank you, Cynthia, for like getting me to know, it was like, oh, you should come here, and, um, talking, um, to, uh, the pa, the minister here, I'm sorry. Pastor Carl, so I wanna say thank you to the leadership of the church, first of all, and for, um, inviting me into your pulpit today. And also to everyone on the stage here that's put this to town hall together, um, I appreciate it, and I'm thankful and grateful. Um, first of all, I just want to start with saying thank you, God, okay? Because, um, this scripture he brought to me, he said, um, in Psalms one thirty-three, one and two, behold how good and how pleasant it is for brethren to dwell together in unity. It is like the precious ointment upon the head that runs down the beard, even Aaron's beard, and it goes down to the skirts of the garment. I'm Angelique Johnson, I'm evangelist Angelique Johnson, so I can go like them. But at, I'm gonna be, um, um, in order, okay? But I just wanted to say that scriptures to say, everything we talked about today, and the reason why I'm here today, um, hinges on that unity aspect. So I thank you for that, and I thank God for putting me in this position. First of all, I'm a wife, I'm a mother, I'm a grandmother, I'm a Bible school graduate, Word of Faith Christian Center, International Christian Center. I'm a precinct delegate of Sterling Heights, Michigan, and I'm also a captain for, um, the Christina Carano campaign, um, in McComb, a co-captain. She asked me, and I also came, um, up and came, came up with the idea, was brought to me that we need help in the brown and black communities. So I also helped start the Michigan Minority Grassroots Coalition, which Cynthia is a part of, and that's how we got in touch, to, um, get in touch with everybody here today. So I'm here to talk about proposal three, but I wanted to just tell you a little bit about myself, and, um, I'm so grateful to be here with you all today, I just want you to know that. Um, and also, let's talk about this proposal three. And I have information for everybody, if you want to take some home also. This is what this is, um, presented to us, it says, don't let them take away your parental rights. This is something you're not hearing in, uh, thousands of commercials that's going forward. Um, sometimes the other side don't have the funds that the other side has to put on so many commercials, to take, um, the mindset of the community to think a certain way. So we have to come down to you all to let you know, and thank you for giving us the opportunity to hear the other side, or hear anything out that you wanna know different. I'm a firm believer in, give me the good, the bad, and the ugly, and then let me choose what I wanna do, and which side I wanna go to. So they're saying right here, we, we're asking people to vote no on this proposal, it's very, very dangerous for, um, our society, and our city, and our country as a whole, but especially Michigan. It's, the committee, um, called the Reproductive Freedom for All is working to amend the Michigan Constitution. This constitution, they're led by Planned Parenthood and ACLU. This committee's amendment titled, Right to Reproductive Freedom Initiative, would create, listen to this, unlimited and unregulated abortion industry in our state. The radical proposals is not about reproductive freedom so much, which already exists, we already have those, um, things that already exist, so people could, who wants to do that, can do those things. But this is a poorly worded amendment that would repeal dozens of state laws, including laws unregulated to abortion. It does not exempt minors, meaning children, could have the ability to make decisions without parental knowledge or consent. So this is the, um, the target that we're focusing on, it's not taking away somebody's right to do what they want with their body. They put that at the heading, and they won't tell you the rest that's filed in the bill, the way it's poorly written. I went to the Capitol to, um, protest and to march against them putting us in, on the ballot, number one, because of the things, the way it was written, um, and the way it's worded. It would have to go into our Michigan Constitution just like that. And so I'm here to break down some of the things that the wording is, um, not as clear on, is why you all here today, to, um, understand that. The following state laws are at risk if the abortion amendment passes. Parental consent is what we're hitting on, because let me break that down, that means that if this law passes, your child, and it doesn't have an age associated with that, can go to anybody in the school. They don't have to be a nurse, they don't have to be, it just have to be a leader in the school, and they can take your child to have these procedures done without the parent's knowledge. So that's the thing that they're not telling everybody, that's, it's written in the bill very poorly, just like that. And I have information where you can look it up too, and you can read the bill, so I'll leave that with you all today. Um, it also has, um, ban on school employees, this is, I was talking about helping children have abortions, it says school employees, it's not saying the school nurse. So, um, your kid will go to somebody, you know, maybe because they don't wanna go home, or tell, you know, they're scared, they're in a situation, that's the situation. Um, and these are the things that they want to take away the parental structure in the schools to do these things. And it also is telling us that the laws are requiring parental consent for medical treatment related to pregnancy, including sterilization and hormone therapy. So hormone therapy, why would my, you know, your, your child may be talking to their friends on TikTok, Facebook, whatever, and they think in one way, you know? At some point, when they were smaller, they don't have an age preference here, they wanna be butterflies, they wanna be hawk, they wanna be Superman, they wanna be all these things, but that usually changes as they grow older, and, um, and, and, and grow up and mature. But if at that age, they can go to a school counselor or a teacher and say, I feel this way, I'm unhappy, and the teacher can take that child to have these services done, that's sterilization, hormone therapy. Because I don't feel like I'm in the right body, I don't feel, you know, this way, yeah, I'm just paraphrasing, um, and trying to be very sensitive to that, me as well. Because our, our children need help, I mean, we need help, you know? So, um, but we don't need to have their, uh, our rights restricted. Because let's say you, your kid come home, and they having issues after the procedures, who's taking care of them? The teacher or the person who took them to do the procedure? Are they gonna see after that child? The after effects of this? That is not written in the bill. So we have to really pay attention and understand, you can, but let me finish reading, it says, um, okay, and then, and it also has a, of course, a late-term abortion, meaning they wanna be able to abort a baby up to nine months. Nine months, yes, so these are the things that are not at the forefront of the commercials that you're seeing out here today. So you have to get the information and read it, and, and really pay attention to why we're saying vote no. It's poorly written, and may need some changes to, to some things, and some things could be looked at, but the way they wrote it, the way they took it to our, um, legislators, that is exactly the way it would go into the Michigan Constitution. They will not change, they even misspell, uh, they misplaced like word, words, it's just really badly done. And we need for the public to see it, get your eyes on it, go and read it for yourselves, so you can understand it's not just the one issue proposal that you see, that it's, uh, they pushing, it's gonna take your rights, it's gonna do this. Um, it's gonna take your rights as a parent to parent. So I may be for this part of it, but I'm not for this part of it. So we have to make the hard choices and decisions for our kids, because again, they change like the wind as they mature. You know, one minute they might wanna be one way, and then if you permanently change some things, or a person at the school did it and took them, you, how you gonna go back from that? How come we're not having conversations? That's not written in the bill, how can you go back? How can you have it re, um, flip back around when the kid changed their mind again, after they did therapies and the procedures? You know, it, it's no going back from that, hormone therapy, it's no going back from, for sterilization of a child, who's not even fully developed all the way yet. Because they, again, they don't have an age preference in the bill that would go into the Michigan Constitution. So, um, their health and safety requirements, um, for abortion facilities, so they're gonna, the bill is also taking away that, the health and safety requirements of abortion facilities. Screening for women being coerced into abortions, this is a big one, that they're not bringing out, because it would open the door, we're gonna vote no on this, it would open the door for a trafficker, for an abuser, for somebody who's maybe kidnapped, I don't know. Took a child into abortion clinic and you won't be screened, they'll just do the procedure, they wanna take that and put that in our Michigan State, uh, Michigan Constitution, without the parent knowing. Again, but at the same time, you don't want the parents to know, but you want a stranger who may have kidnapped the child, got him pregnant, and took him to the abortion clinic, you ask no questions. Make it make sense. So we can't just go along to get along, because it sounds good, and it sounds like you wanna take my rights, and we get emotional about those types of things, because God gave us rights. We do need to stand up and fight for what's right, but at the same time, you gotta watch and read what else is going into that bill. So those are the main things that, um, bother me about it, you know? Requirements that only doctors perform abortions, so what would be a requirement that only a doctor, so you mean my dentist could do an abortion? Like, make that make sense. Why would I put into my law that won't change easily, once it's in the Michigan law, it's law? And, um, it's hard to change it, once it's in there, so we have to pay attention before we vote something in. You know, how, how in the world can somebody else perform an abortion? That's not a medical, in the medical establishment, or a medical doctor who's trained to do that certain thing, so that, that's, that's a big one too. Um, it also has, um, well, I put the ban on statutory rape and incest, okay? And, um, this also has a ban on human cloning. So you saying I'm passing a bill that's saying, if we want a human clone, we can do it, because in Michigan, it's a free-for-all, do whatever you want? No, because under the guise of, it's my body, my choice, they wanna put all these other things in that proposition. So we wanna vote no on proposal three, we wanna get educated about it, as much as you can, reach out to all your family members, other people, and, and look at the good, the bad, the ugly, then you make your decision. I'm always a firm believer in that, because that's what I would do. So, um, in closing, I'd just like to say thank you guys again, I enjoyed, um, this town hall, and, um, hopefully we can go further from here, and I'll keep on implementing, implementing what the, um, pastor up here said that we should do as a group. I'm gonna tell you one more thing, with my Michigan Minority Grassroots Coalition, I got into this, my husband, what are you doing? You the busiest, non, not working person I know. Then I go, I'm busy, I'm putting my boots on the ground, like she said back there, and I'm making a difference. I started making a difference with Michigan for Vaccine Choice, when my grandson had, uh, um, regressed into autism, and that was six years ago. And I started reading everything I could to bring my grandson back to us. He went non-verbal, he went, um, you know, special education schools, he had to get therapy every day, and I just put my boots on the ground, and now I learned everything I could to recover my grandson somewhat, and we learned a lot about detoxing things, and he began to speak again, and he's in, um, regular, uh, fourth grade, doing very well top of class. Um, and so that's what I did, I put my boots on the ground, so I can help other people know what I didn't know at the time. I just went along with doing traditional things that we do, we all, like, this is our parents' shot, so we got three, we got five, now they want seventy-two by the time the kid is eighteen, that's a no-no. But at the same time, I've been to Washington, I marched for those rights, I put my boots on the ground in that area, and now I'm over in this arena, and I also wanna let you guys know that Christina Carano, um, working for her is a blessing. I know there's a lot of things on the news that's not, um, really the truth, look at the good, the bad, the ugly, and I thank you for giving the other side a chance to present their issues, as well as what Christina Carano, running for Secretary of State, will do. Don't believe everything you see. Don't believe everything you see, people. Don't believe everything you see. And vet people, vet them to the most. And she'll be here to explain those things to you all next week. So thank you again for your time, and thank you again for this forum.
Appreciate you so much. Thank you for coming and sharing, so much for coming and sharing. Listen, I just want to follow up with what our sister said and just let everybody know, on these proposals, listen, I know the law, and I just, I believe in being politically correct. I cannot tell you whether to vote yes or no. This is a community meeting, so I just want to make sure as a facilitator, Reverend Powell is not telling you whether to vote yes or no. What I am encouraging you to do is encourage your household on these proposals. And whatever metric you use, whether it's faith, whatever reasoning you use, make the best vote that works for you and your household. Amen? Amen? All right. Thank you so much, my sister, for coming and sharing. It's almost time to close out. We're at eight PM, excuse me. But I do want to acknowledge Mayor Sheldon Nilly, our mayor. He keeps walking me out of this mic. Just want to make sure we acknowledge Mayor Sheldon Nilly. He stopped in today, so we want to acknowledge him. Give him a salute out there. Give me a salute, our mayor. This is our mayor. Thank you. Thank you. Mayor Sheldon Nilly and then his wife, State Representative Stephanie Nilly. Yes, we have as well. Thank you for coming to our community town hall today. We appreciate them and their leadership and what they do. So just really, really quickly, we know that voting is time, election time is coming up. So I want to make sure we're all on the same page, all right? So what are we voting for? We know that we're voting for the mayor, all right? We're voting for a state representative. We're voting for a state senator. We're voting for the eighth congressional, excuse me, we're voting for the eighth congressional seat, all right? We're voting for governor, Michigan Supreme Court. All right, we have the proposals. Proposal 3, amend amendment to the Michigan Constitution, right to reproductive. All right, we got that? All right, so I just want to make sure we know what we're voting on. So when we go to the ballot, all right, let's make sure we are paying attention as we're voting. Once again, I can't tell you who to vote for. Whether you vote for Democrat, Republican, or your own self. I don't care who you vote for. Exercise your right to vote, amen? All right. Thank you all for sharing. Thank you for coming, thank you for allowing me to facilitate this evening. I'm turning over to Brother Jaleel, and then the Brother Darius is gonna come and share from Black Lives Matter and close out. And once again, this is a community forum, so I thank everyone from the community who has come to share. This is not a Democratic forum, this is not a Republican forum, this ain't a Baptist forum, this ain't a Muslim forum. This is a community forum for us to come together and share and build our community back together, all right? Thank you so much.
Thank you Pastor Powell. First, I'd like to thank everybody again for coming out. Those who are running for offices in the school board, mayor, state rep, all of those that came out to show respect to the public who will be going to a voting booth for a Melanin absentee ballot to vote for you or whoever they choose. You show respect to them by showing up or at least sending a representative in your behalf to show up. So we appreciate the mayor coming himself. We appreciate the state rep, Sally Dickie coming herself. We appreciate Lakeisha, running for Board Education. We appreciate Claudia, just running for Board Education. We appreciate Linda Booth, who is running for, we're running, we're running for the Board Education seat. And all those who are in here that are involved in the process. The process itself is just the beginning. The action that you gotta take after the process is over is where the real work is at, and that's where everybody disappears. So we trying to stop the disappearing. That's why Pastor Powell did the breakout session into groups, and you discuss what action you're gonna take from this point on, and then how you will put that action that you came up with into action so that it can be prevalent in the community to help improve the quality of life. Now for that, you should have got a voter's guide. This voter's guide, for those who don't know, like, I didn't even know it was a black woman running for the Michigan Supreme Court. I didn't know till about three, four days ago. So I had said that that's a shame that there's so much distraction going on in the city of Flint that we're not getting enough information to know everything about what we should be voting for that may have an effect on all aspects of our life other than just one part of our life. So we, this voter's guide has the information of everybody that's running for office, Republican, Democrat, every seat, every proposal. I have asked Ms. Johnson to come up to give us a brief understanding on Proposal 3 because, in my opinion, they treat us like we punks. They trying to bully us. You put in a good pocket on Proposal 3, giving women back the right to choose, and then you throw all their garbage in with it. And then you tell us all enough. Either you vote yes to give them back their right and accept all this other stuff, or you vote no and we just take it all off the table. That's a bully tactic. It need to go back and be rewritten and redone. It need to fail, and then it needs to go back and be rewritten and done with somebody that's higher than a third grade. Because when you read it, the language, I'm not a lawyer, that's why I asked for somebody that got some legal sense to come explain this proposal, because they use words that you use in the third and fourth grade when they ask you to write a story. And it leaves it what they call ambiguous. You don't know what it mean, your interpretation is leveled up to you. So we want to just be well-informed, and we want to get out. And then I want to say this for the young people watching, because the young people in Flint frustrated, I'm gonna say, eighteen to thirty-five. They care, everybody I run into say, "I ain't voting." That's what they say to me. I'm gonna tell you. And when I ask them, I say, "Why not?" And they say, "It's too messy." I don't want to, I ain't want to be a part of this. So I told them. I told them. Because they was upset about how messy the mayor race is with the supporters on different sides, doing stuff on social media that's immoral and unethical. And then, like I said earlier, always blaming the president there like he Obama, like he Osama bin Laden. When they blamed him for when the water didn't come down, it's his fault. When the ship sunk, Osama sunk. So you can't blame somebody for everything. You got to look in the mirror sometime to see what you on did. So they frustrated. So what I wanted to do is tell them to go anyway and vote, because there's other stuff that you can vote for. The young people can't just give in because they got a bunch of adults acting the fool that they supposed to follow behind as an example. And then, the last thing, I always say this. If you like a person or not, you always respect the person in the office as long as they care. And I don't care if you like them or not, you respect them. And you don't try to stop them from being successful because they're stupid. That's like turning a gun to your, we're here playing Russian roulette. You want the person that you looking for to help make your life better fail because you don't like them. And then if they fail, you fail. You don't see that. If he failed, the city failed, which mean you failed. So why not help him to win? And if you don't like him, then replace him and get him somebody else. But don't make him fail because you don't like him. That's stupid. I ain't never understood that philosophy. Well, I don't like you, so we both gonna try. Put a hole in the road in everybody. That don't make no sense. I mean, I don't know where that came from, but that's a sick thought. That's the reason why I tell, I don't take side. I'm with the person in power to help him succeed. And if he get out of power, I'm with the next person in power to help him succeed. I don't want to see nobody fail that's trying to help the people. If you ain't trying to help the people, then you shouldn't even be in front of the people. You should stay away. Because this ain't no easy work, because people are ungrateful. People don't care. You can do all you want to help them, and they'll find another reason to tell you why you didn't do enough to help them. So I'm gonna say this and turn it over to our brother. I want to make it clear. People was complaining about the $300 water credit. Let me tell you something. Everybody in the household is different. $300 gonna give me three months off paying my bill. My bill is $78 to $98 a month. So $300 gonna give me three months. So I ain't gonna have the same feeling if your bill a hundred and fifty a month, where $300 ain't gonna give you but two months. So you can't put everybody in the same bag and say, "Well, $300 ain't nothing, it ain't doing nothing. It help me." I ain't gotta worry about that for three, look, take it off the calendar to January. We ain't gotta worry about it. So you can't put everybody in the same boat. And you can't say if nobody do what you want them to do, they didn't do right. I don't know where that came from either. We gonna stop all this stuff. We ain't, this group don't operate like. If you do a little something, you did something. If you move two steps forward, you did something. We might not like the way you took the steps. We might not like that you didn't go far enough with the first step, but if you moving, you did something. So we gotta quit saying you ain't did nothing. That ain't gonna help nobody. You don't know that. Somebody helped him. So I'm somebody, I'm last up on, I live in the city of Flint. Now can more be done? More can always be done. But if we put you in charge, how would you be? I guarantee you, everybody in this room, if you became mayor tomorrow, in about two months, you'll be on the chopping block like everybody else. But you didn't, I called you, my points fell in.
Not everybody.
If you claim you want to lead this city, then what happens in this city, you own it. And you have to take responsibility for the problems of this city. I can write in Mickey Mouse. And Mickey Mouse, when things that happen in this city is on their way, and they have to be held accountable.
We not saying that, we not saying that, Mother Claire. We saying, we saying, if you blaming for the bad, don't be silent for good.
No, it's not blaming. It's being held accountable. Like, for example, look at the seven people in this state, nameless, faceless people. We never knew they existed. Behind the scenes, up in the offices of Lansing, overlooking the poison. Are we suppo, no, they didn't poison us, but they didn't do nothing about it. They didn't call it out, and now we getting a few crumbs from the state. So I'm just saying, people who step up and say they want to lead me and lead this city, we have to hold them accountable. That don't mean we don't praise them when they do good, but accountability is what we do not have as it relate to the water crisis. None of it. Charges dropped in June. Charges dropped last month. Charges dropped last week.
We deserve that.
No, they didn't come and push the button. We seen on TV who pushed the button, but they were responsible. Now I'm just saying.
We gotta, we gotta, we gotta get out and respect the God, respect the church in this time. We gonna pray. We gonna pray, we gonna pray when we close out. But while we, while I do have a quick second, we do have a situation on hand about our young brother, Bontree Davis. Mayor Nee, I know you close to Chief Green, because it was Flint police. So the officers that chased him broke the law, somebody died. We want them fired. Fired. Ran out, we want them done. They should not be on staff no more. They broke the law. Not only fired, we need them arrested and charges brought to us. Because a young brother, our young brother died because they broke the law and chased him. Now if anybody say they didn't chase him, I have witnesses of that. One here, and another person that was on the scene also that know for a fact that there was a chase. The brother died in front of my mother's house. All this happened right in front of my mother's house. There was a crash and then sirens. Police ain't never been that quick in Flint. Crash and sirens, so they was already chasing. We want them fired. It's on camera, you hear, I'm asking? No, I ask, we demanding them brothers be fired. Whoever they are, I know these officers, we demanding they be fired. And the nurse that kicked our sister while she was dying in her hospital. Not bringing it to you because you are the mayor of the city. For the moment still, you are the mayor, am I correct? Now after my check leaving, you the mayor. So I gotta bring it to you. And for our state representative, then, I don't get any, oh, you are. Now I know you are. For our state representative, please, and I say please, I am, you talking, you dealing with a person, I was incarcerated for thirteen years. When I left Flint, it was in a different condition than when I came home to. And so what I hear now is I'm saying, please, can we please get some representation if you gonna be back in office? All I'm saying. I would before when we pray, I'm gonna pray for anybody that's gonna take office. Because we supposed to pray for our lease, that's what the Bible say. But you will be held accountable when you see my face. If it ain't right, I'm gonna bring it to you. I ain't got no problem with it. Don't nobody owe me, ain't nobody paying me but the job I work and the God I serve. So let's bow our heads, let's pray, let's get the body. Father God, we thank you for everyone that showed up. Father God, we pray for travel and mercies for everyone as they go. Lord Jesus, we ask you, Lord, to be with all our leaders in this city. All our leaders, Lord, start to touch their hearts, Lord, to where they have concern for the people that they are supposed to be serving, the people that put them in position, Father God. We pray for their protection. We pray for their mind that will turn them back towards you into a mindset of love for what they're supposed to be doing, Father God. And we just pray for every individual that representing their families here right now, Father God. And these things, we pray in Jesus' name, amen? Too much? If I was standing up, I would be in the streets. City would love me. Please, I'm walking. I would be in these streets. I would be in the streets.